Good morning. I call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Carroll County, February 18th, 2025, to order. Can we have an establishment of quorum?
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Ms. Krieger.
Yeah.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Swiston.
Here.
Mr. Lester.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Secretary Daly.
Here.
Madam Chair, please let the record reflect that seven members are present and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Has everybody reviewed the agenda? Were there any changes to the agenda? No? No. Okay.
A move we approve the agenda is submitted.
Second in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The agenda stands approved. Did you have a chance to review the minutes for January 8th and January 21st? Is he nodding? So.
A move we approve the minutes is submitted without change.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right on to number six. I have no report, just welcome, everybody. Anything from?
Nothing from me, but thank you.
Okay. Any other members? Nope. Okay. Number seven, Secretary Daly, you're up.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I have just a few reminders by way of the administrative matters. The first is a reminder that we are having the master plan open houses currently. We've had two so far, and despite the weather, they've both gone off successfully. Those were in Westminster and in Mount Airy. We have three more coming up, so just put those again on your radar screen. Tomorrow, February 19th, we'll be at the Tonnytown Branch Library. Thursday, February 27th, we'll be at the North Carroll Branch Library. And Thursday, March 6th, we'll be at the Eldersburg Branch Library. Those are open houses, meaning they're from 1:00 to 7:00:00 in the afternoon and evening. Drop in anytime. We'll have a whole set of information available to the public to take a look at, ask questions about, and most importantly, to provide some feedback that we will share with you all as material for consideration in updating the master plan. The other reminder that I have for you is that we are currently taking applications for the Citizens Planning Academy. Those applications will be available through the end of this week, and we'll review those and form the first cohort for that Planning Academy, which will start its work on March 20th. And that'll run for six sort of consecutive weeks. I think we take a break one week in there around Easter. And folks who are interested in applying for that academy can find the application online just by visiting the county's website. And then the last reminder I have is that we are in the process of scoping out the three work groups that you all had passed a resolution for back in January. I'll be bringing the, an outline of that, their work, the work for each of those work groups, to you at the beginning of March, along with some preliminary names for folks to serve on those work groups. So if you have any people that you would like to recommend for participation, please be sure to forward those names to me and we can put those folks on the list. I think that is it for me for administrative matters.
Okay. Thank you. Extensions? None? Okay. BZA cases?
There are no BZA cases at this time.
Anything else?
I do want to invite Brenda Denny up here. There she is. As we discussed at a previous meeting, the legislative session is underway, and we typically give you a little bit of, some highlights for legislation that's moving through that's particularly of interest in the planning world. So you all have a copy of the update that Brenda's going to go through. I also have it up here on the screen for those who want to follow along. She's just going to give you a few highlights of things that are working their way through the process.
Good morning. There's hundreds and hundreds of bills that have been introduced, and what we've tried to do is pull together just a few that impact the Planning Commission, maybe action that the Planning Commission would normally have to take, or, you know, something that relates to you. So I've grouped them by topic, and I just want to touch on them quickly. I don't want to take a lot of time this morning, but there's information there if you want to look for, to get to the bill, the link is there. The first one is SB 266, and that one is basically, you have the, was called the visions that are required by the state to be in your comprehensive plans. This one's just revising what they are a little bit and calling them principles instead. There wasn't anything that was big red flags, other than the original bill didn't even mention agriculture. It has since passed the House with amendments that include reference to agriculture, forests, and fisheries, so that didn't, so that's moving along. Next, we have several housing bills to keep an eye on. The first one is probably the one that concerns us the most, and it's called Housing for Jobs Act. It's SB 430, HB 503. This bill is essentially furthering the governor's housing initiatives that he started last year, and it's looking to require, or to allocate amounts of housing that each county needs to have in order to fill what they consider a gap in housing needs when you look at the number of jobs to the amount of housing that are available. And there's some requirements related to your APFO, and they're looking to keep planning commissions from delaying the process arbitrarily. I don't think that happens here. I don't know about other counties, but this applies to everybody. So there, there are some other things in there. It's a multi-page bill, but those are the main things that I think are concerned to us, and we're not sure where they're getting the numbers from, that's not clear. And how they're going to allocate them to municipalities, when we get to see the metrics, and all that stuff is not clear in this bill, so we're keeping our eye on that. The hearings have not occurred for this bill yet. And this bill was sponsored by the leadership, so, of both the House and the Senate at the request of the governor. So this one's going to move through in some form. The next one is SB 891, HB 1466, and this one relates to accessory dwelling units. It's, you know, encouraging, it's establishing a policy by the state to encourage accessory dwelling units to be allowed almost everywhere, I guess. And we already allow them to some degree, but this is requiring us to allow them to be detached without having to subdivide. So we'll see if that progresses. The hearings haven't taken place for either of those bills yet either. They will be next week and the week after. The next bill, HB 751, relates to annexations. And currently, when property is annexed into a municipality, and you look at, the county's looking at, is when it's annexed, what will the land be zoned, and how similar is that to the way it's zoned in the county? And if it's, you know, I'm sure you're familiar with all this, but if it's, you know, a certain amount of density difference, the county has the ability to delay them for, I think, five years before they can change the zoning. What this bill does is change that to looking at what the land use designation is on the comprehensive plan. The next three bills are all related to solar or energy in some way. This has been a very big year for bills related to solar and energy. As you can imagine, not only is there a big push for solar energy in the state based on the state's goals, but we also have the proposed transmission line that has generated a lot of legislation. And I don't have them all here, there's quite a few of them that are related to eminent domain and not, you know, kind of prohibiting that from being used. Whether any of these bills pass, I don't know, but the three that I've pulled out are the ones that probably most relevant, or maybe have, at least one of these we know is going to pass. But, so the SB 478, HB 739, is for local approval. That's basically just saying that we, they have to, they have to get approval by the local, PSC, the Maryland Public Service Commission, which is the body that approves any energy generating systems like solar or nuclear or anything that's a big facility. They have to get approval from the local jurisdiction first. That's, the hearing hasn't happened on that yet, and that's probably not going to pass. HB 645, on the transmission line citing. This one requires that jurisdictions develop a comprehensive plan element for citing a transmission line alignment. And this is, not only is it impractical, it's not possible at this time because the utility companies won't even share that information with us that we need based on security issues. So the information you would need to even develop that element, we can't get, and we couldn't do this. So the hearing happens on this, on Thursday, on the 20th. Hopefully, that one isn't going anywhere because of the logistics. Senate Bill 931, House Bill 1036, Public Utilities, Generating Stations, Generating Citing, called the Renewable Energy Certainty Act. This is the big solar bill this year. This is the bill that is, will be establishing citing standards, and will preempt anything that we have adopted. And pretty much, you know, takes away the county's, any authority we have to do anything. So the bill was introduced with, it was different from when Maryland Association of Counties was working with the industry and the legislators to come up with something that would be introduced. It was very different than what we thought that was going to be. So Maryland Association of Counties has requested amendments that look more like what we agreed on. No matter what, this is moving forward, and the county is going to have to, we're going to lose our authority at some level, to some degree. It's really what we're trying to do is minimize the damage at this point because that's what we've been told is happening. So if this passes, which I'm sure it will, to some degree, we'll be limited in the citing standards that we developed and adopted in the fall. We won't, so that'll be replaced, and we'll have to follow that when it comes to the Planning Commission for site plan approval. So the hearing on that is next week. The last solar one is SB 983, HB 827, and this one is essentially just about, so the DGCPCN is distributed generation, so in other words, it's community solar. And it's, sorry, I've looked at hundreds of bills, I have to look at this again. So this one would set up a work group that would then develop solar citing standards. So this one also relates to developing standards that we would have to follow. The other one is more likely to pass. This one, the standards wouldn't even be done, they're just developing them in this work group, whereas the other bill, the standards would actually be adopted in the bill and probably followed up with regulations that impose even more restrictions on citing standards. So those are the main bills that I wanted to just bring to your attention today. You'll see there's another, several bills on here that I'm not going to go through, but just for your information, there's some related to transportation, another annexation related bill. So the one, HB 671, where it talks about climate vulnerable areas on the back of the last page, toward the bottom, that one has been withdrawn since I put this together, so you don't need to worry about that one. But the rest of them, feel free to, you know, check out the bills if you're interested. That was my quick update. I will, assuming you want me to come back again next month and update on the progress of those bills. At that point, you can see at the top of the handout I gave you, the dates of interest. So by the time you have your next Planning Commission meeting, crossover, all the committees will have been required to report out, which means they give a favorable report, favorable with amendments, or they report it unfavorably. That goes to the floor of the chamber, and then the floor of the chamber, everybody needs to vote on it. If it passes, then it crosses over to the other chamber. So that crossover to the other chamber needs to happen by March 17th, which is the day before your next Planning Commission meeting. And then at some point, you know, they, of course, it's going to have to be passed in the opposite chamber and go back to the original chamber before signing die if it's going to pass. So we should know what has crossed over by the next Planning Commission meeting. I'll be furiously looking to see what happened by midnight on the 17th in order to report to you on the 18th.
Well, thank you.
Any questions?
Great. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number eight, Master Plan Municipal Planning Presentation, Sykesville. Welcome.
So if I could just do a little introduction, because this morning we have a slightly different rhythm of things here than usual. As you know, we've invited all the municipalities to share a little bit about their planning process, what their plans have in the works, as well as some of the major issues that are, that they're facing, and potential ways that the county and the municipalities could jointly support each other in their planning goals. You heard from the town of Union Bridge at your last meeting, and today we have the town of Sykesville and the city of Tonnytown, and folks from each of those towns are going to share a little bit about what they've got on the boards. So I'll turn it over to Joe and Kevin, they can introduce themselves, and we'll start with the town of Sykesville. And I have your presentation up here. If you want to scroll through it, you can, or I can?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, again, I just want to take an opportunity just to say thank you for having us today. My name's Joe Costantini, I'm the Town Manager in Sykesville. This is a document that we adopted, I want to say, back in 2021, that we're very proud of, so anytime we get a chance to talk about it publicly, especially like this, we take that opportunity. Also want to say, again, just because, you know, we don't get the opportunity to present to you guys very often, is, you know, how much we want to express our appreciation, both the planning and land development staff here at Carroll County. They help us out quite a bit, and again, anytime we can sing their praises publicly, we want to do that as well. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to our planner, Kevin Rubenstein, and he'll kind of walk through the process that we went through to adopt our comprehensive plan.
Thanks, Joe. So yeah, my name's Kevin Rubenstein, I'm the Town Planner for the town of Sykesville. Yeah, I wanted to thank everyone for inviting us here this morning to go over, you know, our comprehensive plan, a little bit about what we got going on in town. So our plan is titled Vision 2030, the Town of Sykesville Comprehensive Plan. With that, I'll jump into it. So I wanted to start with a quick disclosure that I did not actually work for the town when this plan was being developed. I got hired a little bit after the plan's adoption, but, you know, I say "we" a lot when talking about our approach, just know that when I say "we," I mean the town as a whole and staff at the time of adoption. I also want to note that we understand that there is no best way to create a comprehensive plan. We took a certain approach, but just because we thought that approach would work for us doesn't mean that approach works for everybody. So just because we did it one way doesn't mean it's the right way, it's just the way we wanted to do it, to do it. So what was that approach? Well, our main goal was to avoid what Joe likes to refer to as a cookie cutter comp plan. So in other words, we didn't want to just take the state required elements of a comprehensive plan and then organize it into sections and chapters using those elements and create a dense document that's just going to sit on a shelf for 10 years and then, you know, do it again in a decade. We really wanted to create a usable document. We wanted something that members of our community could really pick up, and even if they have no planning background, they could pick it up, they can access it, and at least understand to a basic degree what it is we're trying to accomplish. So one of the ways we thought we would do that is create something that was very illustration and graphic heavy. We feel like visuals are a great tool to kind of explain to people what our goals are and hopefully get them on board and to support those goals. So what do we do? We use public feedback to determine our community's priorities, and then we took those priorities and organized them into four primary chapters or sections. That is growth and future land use, accessibility and connectivity, image and identity, and environmental stewardship. So I'll briefly go through each of those sections for you guys. Okay. So first is growth and future land use, and I want to note that, a theme you guys will probably notice throughout this presentation, is that our plan is very Main Street or downtown, I guess, so to speak, oriented. And the reason we did it that way is because we feel like, you know, our Main Street is really the beating heart of Sykesville. It's an area where, you know, we rarely have any retail vacancies down there, the residential units are really popular, and we just thought that this plan was a good opportunity to try to build on the success we were already experiencing on our Main Street. So that's kind of what, or, so one of the ways we thought we would do that is infill and downtown expansion. So that's kind of what the image that you guys are seeing here is. So basically, all of these white buildings on here don't currently exist, but that was an area that Sandusky Road and Main Street, it was identified as maybe a logical place that, you know, where can we expand our downtown in an area that, although it's small, is very dense and built out already? So we really had to come up with some, or get creative and come up with some areas that either are empty parcels or parcels that are being underutilized, and how can we redevelop those parcels to, you know, expand and give, you know, opportunity for maybe some more merchants to come in, some more residential spaces or office spaces to come in. So that's what you're looking at there. And then the other, one of the other things that we identified is a way that we can grow our downtown and our town as a whole is through using zoning, specifically zoning as a growth mechanism. And I'll talk a little bit more about zoning later, but it's, it was really how can we leverage our zoning to encourage the type of development that we want to see? For example, what's being shown on that image, because our current zoning makes it difficult and is even at times prohibitive to the type of development we want to encourage. I mean, just, for example, what's on the screen is, would be difficult, if not impossible, to create under our current zoning. So how can we tweak it a little bit to encourage that type of mixed-use development we want to see? Can we add some maybe form-based elements into our code so that property owners aren't quite as burdened with the actual use of their parcel, but instead, you know, maybe just create a building that fits the fabric of the town, and then the uses can vary and change over time without as much difficulty? And then obviously, you know, if you actually look at the plan, it goes into a lot more detail about each one of those, and there's also other action items that are identified, but I just wanted to make sure I'm kind of touching on some of the more prominent ones. So our next section is accessibility and connectivity. So Sykesville is a walkable area in terms of its size and its scale, and we do have trail networks and sidewalk networks that support pedestrian movement throughout town, but oftentimes a big problem for us is our topography. So we always say it's easy to get to our Main Street and it's difficult to leave, and, you know, that's not just because we have a lot of great merchants that are keeping folks down there, but because it's just kind of a pain to get out because every direction is uphill. So unless you drove there, it's hard to get out. So then the big question for us is, you know, how do we make it easier for folks to get around? And we identified a few things. So first, in 2019, we commissioned a connectivity study to be done. That study identified 13 different projects that could be used to improve and extend sidewalk and trail networks, improve bicycle infrastructure, and that's what the image is showing you up there. So those are some of the priority projects that came out of that study. You'll notice a lot of those priority projects, if you look closely, funnel people to Main Street, obviously that was intentional, it's not a coincidence. But it's just good to have these projects already identified, so if the funding or the ability to undergo a big, you know, connectivity project comes up, you know, we already have the projects, you know, figured out. So it's one step that's already done. Another thing that our plan talks about is implementing complete street design improvements. So for those who are unfamiliar, just in general terms, complete streets is just creating roads that are designed to accommodate the safe use and support for, and mobility for all users. But obviously, just like everything we do, we have to look at it in a, in the context of our town. So really, for Sykesville specifically, it means, you know, improving on-street bicycle infrastructure, and then making sure there's logical and safe sidewalk connections, crosswalks, sightlines, basically making sure the built environment is there so folks can navigate the town safely and effectively without always having to use their cars. And then finally, there's some mobility and accessibility partnerships, so that's things like, you know, can we get an e-bike sharing program in town? So, you know, maybe folks can ride a bike down in the Main Street and then get back up the back up the hill without too much difficulty. Same thing with e-scooters or, you know, small-scale municipality-focused ride-share networks. And then something else that, you know, I'll touch on this more a little bit later as well, but but partnerships with the county to maybe revitalize and better promote on our end, county transportation initiatives that operate in Sykesville and connect our town with, you know, other places and other amenities around the county. So those are all things that we feel like we could potentially do to improve accessibility and connectivity for our community. Make sure I have my new January page. So our next section is image and identity. So for this, it's really, it's how can we make Sykesville comfortable and inviting? The first thing I have up there is historic preservation, and that's there because we put a lot of emphasis on historic preservation in town, and we do that a few different ways. And first is through our historic district and our historic district commission. So I know that's something a lot of other municipalities and jurisdictions have, but just for those who don't know, basically that means, you know, any any time that there's a building in our historic district that is going to undergo any sort of external renovations, it has to be reviewed and approved by our historic district commission. Now, I know that can sound tedious for some folks, but you know, it's something that we've had a lot of success with. Our historic district commission is great, they do a really good job enforcing our guidelines, and you know, you just take a stroll down Main Street and you'll you'll see how successful that our historic district's been. Along with that, we also have our facade improvement grant program, again, something that I know a lot of other municipalities utilize. This is administered in partnership with the Downtown Sykesville Connection, which is our nonprofit Main Street organization, and they do a lot of great work, put on a lot of great events in town. But they help with this project, which just basically it incentivizes property owners to maintain their historic districts. It allows us to offset some of the costs of their projects by reimbursing them 50% of their project costs, up to $10,000. And again, this is another program that's been really, really popular in town. People, you know, we've been fortunate that our property owners in town really take advantage of this and really take a lot of pride in keeping their buildings looking nice. And it's something, you know, we obviously hope to continue so long as the grant funding remains available moving forward. And then the next thing I have up there is wayfinding and signage. So again, part of image and identity is making the town inviting. And wayfinding, or strong wayfinding and signage network can really serve as the invitation to some of the underutilized town destinations. So we have places like our historic colored schoolhouse, our historic gatehouse museum, different parks and amenities outside of Main Street that folks might not be as familiar with. So if we can, you know, improve our wayfinding and signage network, it can not only make folks aware of these amenities, but actually, you know, invite them to these places and get them there. So that's something that we thought that we could certainly improve on. And then finally is enhance public spaces, so this is bringing it back into downtown. Our Main Street, you know, although we have a lot of great events, we don't have really a good place for folks just on a random weekend afternoon to congregate, hang out, relax, spend time with their friends. So it's how can we, where can we create those spaces? How can we get creative to create those spaces for the community? And we identified a few things. First is Oklahoma Avenue, it's a small street that connects to Main Street, almost like an alley that is part of a streetscape project that I'll talk about a little bit later. We're going to add some specialized pavement and removable bollards there, so that can be a pedestrian-only corridor as needed. And then also our townhouse lawn redevelopment project. So our town hall, or we call it the townhouse, on the front lawn. So on the left is sort of a Google Street Maps view of what it currently looks like and the right is a rendering of what we hope to someday make it look like. You know, obviously you can see right now, it's got a, the steps are narrow, it shoots you right out onto Main Street, the hedges kind of block it off and make it a little less inviting, the grade makes it difficult for folks to actually sit there and spend time. Whereas on the right, you see that the steps are sort of wide and setback from Main Street, the hedges are gone to create more of an invitation. It's terraced off so that, you know, there's a lot more flat area, there's ADA accessibilities for the parking lots in the back, so folks can get from Main Street to the parking lots in the back. And then, you know, if you've ever been to our Main Street, you know, this is basically smack dab in the middle of it. So it would be a really, really good location to create something like this for folks to, you know, hang out, spend time, gather, and just, you know, be around without having to be inside one of the one of the shops or businesses all the time. And the last of the four primary chapters is environmental stewardship. So this is really just how can we continue to to stay green as we grow? So so among other things, we know continuing our partnerships with the county to achieve compliance with their NITDS and MS4 permits, as well as engaging in other projects that could have residual benefits on flooding and water quality. We look at things like downtown green infrastructure, so as we get into some of those downtown expansion and infill projects, make sure we're incorporating things like permeable pavement, rain gardens, street trees, you know, all these things to reduce the the quantity and improve quality of stormwater runoff. And then environmentally conscious policies, so that's just ensuring regulations and policy decisions are done with environmental stewardship in mind, making sure, you know, we're adopting ordinances that allow us to do things like get our Tree City USA certification that we got last year, and just always keeping environmental stewardship front of mind when we're, you know, implementing new policy decisions. And then, so after our four primary chapters, then we get into our background chapters. And our background chapters are what allowed us to then actually check all those boxes and meet all the state mandated requirements. So so everything that is required by the state that wasn't in the four primary chapters, we hit on here. I do want to note too, just because they're background chapters, doesn't mean they're not important. These are still very, very important elements of our comprehensive plan. There's a lot of really good information in those chapters. You know, a lot of, you know, there's still graphics and illustrations and charts and all that stuff, and it's still accessible, but it's just stuff that, you know, might be a little bit more technical or that the public at large wasn't as interested in, at least at the time of us getting community feedback. But, you know, it's something that, again, we hope that someone can pick up our plan, access at least the four primary chapters at the beginning, then if they're interested in getting into the little more of the nitty gritty, then they can start digging through the background chapters as well. So in a nutshell, that is kind of the major components of our comprehensive plan. Again, obviously, we just touched on, you know, a little bit of the the general overview, but there's a lot of really good specifics in the plan, like Joe said, we're very proud of it, so I'd encourage everyone to take a look if they are curious. And then, so moving on from there, Daphne also asked, so do we have any major projects or developments in town that we wanted to to talk about? So I'll I'll move on to those real quickly here. So first, we have our downtown streetscape project that we are working on. So that, this is a project that is, it's either just finished stormwater review or it's wrapping up stormwater review with the county, and we're hoping to get get started on here pretty soon. The image here is showing a rendering of what we hope the plan to look like. I guess in hindsight, I probably should have put a picture of what it also currently looks like, but I'll kind of explain the major components. So so the south end of our Main Street is an area that's very popular right now, especially in the spring and summer. You know, the Vinyl and Main host their summer block parties along with the distillery, and they have live bands out there and, you know, there's the Creamery, there's Baldwin Station Restaurant Building that's being redeveloped into a new restaurant, our Downtown Sykesville Connection's redeveloping a building down there. So it's an area that's experiencing a lot of success, so we wanted to try to do what we could as a town to support the success that is already happening down there thanks to our merchants. So we wanted to do things like add in more crosswalks, make, you know, put in better pedestrian infrastructure, maybe, you know, hopefully slow cars down that are coming through there so that, you know, it feels like more of a pedestrian area, because right now it just kind of feels like a couple parking lots and a road. So we're we're really trying to improve the pedestrian infrastructure, we want to redevelop the the parking area for the restaurant down here so that it's delineated more from Baldwin Drive, because right now Baldwin Drive just kind of melts into the parking lot and it's kind of a chaotic free-for-all down there sometimes. And then, you know, up here, you can't really see it in the rendering, just south of this green building is where Oklahoma Avenue is, that's that road, they might get some specialized pavement and removable bollards to turn that into a pedestrian-only corridor, you know, as as desired. So again, a pretty big project to really enhance the south end of our Main Street and again, just just help support the success that the merchants down there are already having. And then the second major development for us is our zoning subdivision regulations. So we are currently in the process of completely overhauling those regulations with the primary goal of really, you know, modernizing and tailoring the regulations to the town as it currently exists. We want to allow for some greater flexibility in housing types, we want to generate opportunities for creative infill development, and we want to encourage good mixed-use development when the opportunity becomes available in town. And, you know, when we say mixed-use development, we have a very specific idea of at least what we want. You know, Joe refers to these things as multiple-use communities that might have, you know, a pocket of residential here, a pocket of commercial, and maybe a pocket of, you know, office space here. And, you know, we kind of want to avoid that, we'd prefer something that, you know, has a little bit of all of that in each block. So so each block has a good mixture of uses and houses. So really, part of these zoning subdivision regulations is make sure that we are ready when an opportunity for something like that is available, make sure we have the regulations in place to not only allow for that type of development, but also encourage it. And then, you know, obviously, you also encourage more housing to be built in town as well, because again, that's always a major issue. And then that kind of segues us into the last part, which Daphne asked if there were any opportunities for collaboration between the town and the county to achieve any mutual planning goals. So as part of our zoning and subdivision updates, we wanted to try to align our town processes better with the processes that the county has in place. And that's because, you know, for all intents and purposes, the county is our review agency for a lot of these big projects, and we're very thankful for that, we think they do a fantastic job. But we sometimes have some issues or confusion because the town's processes and terminology doesn't always match up with the county's processes, terminologies, you know, and sometimes the simple things like what the town calls a site plan might be different than what the county calls a site plan. And same thing with, you know, preliminary plans and and final plans or record plans, all that stuff. So making sure our terminology aligns and then making sure our submit and review requirements align, at least to the point that we can eliminate as much confusion as possible for us and for developers, because when they're going, trying to go through the town process and the county process, and we're saying the same thing but referring to different things, it just creates a lot of a lot of confusion. So we're getting to a point with our regulation update that, you know, hopefully soon we have a draft that we're going to be sharing with folks over at the county to get some feedback, to make sure our proposed new regulations do match up the way that we want them to. And like I said, just to hopefully streamline those processes and and avoid some more confusion moving forward. And then finally, something that I did touch on a little bit earlier is county-wide transportation initiatives. So again, accessibility and connectivity was one of our primary goals. So, you know, the county has the Trailblazer Bus Program, and there was a South Carroll Route that ran through Sykesville and Eldersburg that ended a few years ago, I think, you know, due to low ridership, so it's understandable. But is there a way that we could work together to maybe bring something like that back to the southern part of Carroll County? And then if we do, what can we do as a town to better promote something like that, to encourage more ridership from our community, to make it something that's more sustainable moving forward and and an amenity that, you know, the town and the county can work together to offer to our community, you know, long-term? So, you know, just a few things. So with that, I'll try to, you know, not take up any more of anyone's time. I wanted to say thank you again for the planning commission for inviting us here this morning, thank you to Daphne, and want to see if anyone had any questions.
I have one question. The property that had those hedges and then you had a, your vision of it?
Mm-hmm.
Who owns that property?
That's town-owned property.
Town-owned. So you are able to do something with that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the things we looked at when we were evaluating kind of our downtown and where potential redevelopment projects were going to happen, we we've focused on town-owned properties so that, again, we could, we could move forward relatively quickly.
So with private property?
Mm-hmm.
Just offering them incentives to do certain things?
Yes. So it's like as we go through our zoning ordinance and we start to incentivize certain things that we want to see in our downtown, it's it's not necessarily going to prohibit certain things, it's just, it's going to be easier for you to maybe move through a process if you do it, if you do like a mixed-use building the way we want to see mixed use in our downtown.
Well, it looks like you're doing a good job.
We try.
Very informative.
Well, thank you again, we really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to be back, I've got another meeting, I've got to get to it.
Next up, we have the city of Tonny Town to share a little bit of what is happening in their neck of the woods. I'm going to pull up their, come on up, guys.
Daphne, can?
Yeah.
We get those.
Yes.
Okay.
I will share that with you.
Thank you.
Please do. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jim Weprack, I'm the city manager in Tonny Town. With me this morning are Jim Parker, our planning commission chairman, and Darrell Hale, our director of planning and zoning and code enforcement officer. So we are just embarking on our comprehensive plan update. We're quite a bit overdue, we've had several false starts over the last eight or nine years, trying to do it at the staff level. Last year, we finally contracted a consultant to help guide us through and hopefully get through the entire thing this time around. So we're still in the fact-finding and discussion phases. We've surveyed the community, got a, we're pretty pleased with the response, over 20% of the households responded, so, you know, not not stellar, but above what we were expecting really. And we are finding some very healthy discussion is ongoing with our planning commission currently. We've been holding a comprehensive plan workshop monthly the week before our regular planning commission meetings so that we can focus on the comprehensive plan and making those updates. Those discussions have been lengthier than anticipated, so our completion date is probably sliding a little bit from originally our original schedule. But what I really wanted to talk about was really just to give an update overall and talk about a few of the challenges that that we have in Tonny Town and how we can work with the county hopefully to coordinate our planning and overcome some of our challenges. So for us, we have water and sewer capacity challenges. We are recharge constrained on the water side, so with MDE's owned and controlled policy where we can only pump our production wells to the extent that nature can recharge the aquifer, but we can only count acreage that's under our control or ownership. So rain that falls outside of the corporate boundary doesn't count. So with that policy, we really can't develop at the rate that that our groundwater recharges at about 290 gallons per day per acre, we can't develop at smart growth densities without acquiring recharge easements outside of the city. The county has been very helpful with that effort and we're working through some stuff right now where the some county acquired recharge is going to be made available for us, but we still need to find more in order to grow. The Department of the Environment currently says we have a recharge deficit in Tonny Town, that is, our our wells are permitted to pump more than nature can recharge. So it's been over a decade since we've had a face-to-face with MDE on that matter, so we're hoping to get all of our cards lined up and ready to put on the table for a meeting, hopefully within the next six to nine months. I don't know at this point how long it will take to work through all of that. But recharge is our our challenge on the water side. We have production capacity, we have wells that we know can pump much more than they're currently permitted for, but we can't turn up the dial without recharge. We currently have about 37,000 gallons per day of water available, but we have three major development projects on the horizon, one of which is already in the review process. Mountain Brook Farms would bring roughly 400 units to the city, a mixture of single-family homes and townhomes. And we are hoping that we will work through things with MDE so that by the time the development is ready, we will have the capacity available on the water side. On the wastewater side, our treatment plant is rated at 1.1 million gallons per day, and we've done a lot of projects in the last couple of years. We used all of our ARPA money on infrastructure, and so we've done a number of sewer rehabilitation projects as well as some water line replacement in the last couple of years that have really made a significant difference on our inflow and infiltration issue that we have. We've been losing about half of our treatment plant capacity to inflow and infiltration into the system. So we've been kind of attacking those old terracotta lines that are still in the city from, you know, pre-1970 or or I guess, well, into the 70s. So we've done a lot of relining, replacement, and we're currently flowing at about 73 gallons per day. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a second. No, we're about 800. from, you know, pre-1970 or, or I guess, well, into the 70s. So we've done a lot of relining, replacement, and we're currently flowing at about 73 gallons per day. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a second. No, we're about 800,000 gallons per day average over the last three years. So that's what MDE is going to look at and what we look at for our capacity as far as water and sewer planning. So we've got about 73,000 gallons per day left before we hit 80% of our capacity, which is when we need to submit a capacity management plan to the state. So that's kind of our target, our planning number. We don't want to push beyond that. So again, we're going to be limited on the wastewater side. If you had asked me three years ago what I saw as being the big development difficulty for Tawnytown, I would have said sewer capacity. But thanks in part to the ARPA funds, we were able to accelerate our rehab projects for the sewer side much more quickly than we had expected. So at this point now, it's kind of flipped, so now we're worried more about recharge because, at least for the foreseeable future, our wastewater capacity is, is a much better picture than, than it was several years ago. Let's see. And we, we have a number of, we have, I guess, four more wastewater sewer line rehab projects in our capital improvement program, but we are going to slow down a little bit on that because we're, we have one project yet to begin that's a water line project, and that will use the last of our ARPA money. So on the good side, we've managed to design, engineer, approve, bid, and build $6 million worth of infrastructure projects in a very condensed time period. So very proud that we pulled that off, but now that money's spent. So now we're back to the usual of, we need to, we, we try to avoid taking on additional debt. So the city had developed a policy under the previous city manager where we would, if at all possible, we save up for a project and pay cash for the project rather than adding debt to, to the city's balance sheet. And we've managed to not borrow for infrastructure projects for, I would say we haven't done any new borrowing for eight to 10 years, perhaps longer. And we'd like to keep it that way for as long as we can. So we are challenged with some capacity issues, and we're looking at, as I said, we have three substantial projects, either in the planning process or about to enter the process. The first, the project that I mentioned, Mountain Brook Farms, is on the screen. Towards the bottom left, there's a kind of orange area. Yep, and Daphne's got the cursor there. That is Mountain Brook Farm. That's about 150-acre parcel. The southern part is their first phase, and they are at the preliminary plan stage currently for that. A significant feature of this project is that it would construct a segment of the long-planned Tawnytown bypass that would cross that property. That's the, I guess, diagonal line that runs north to south, well, southeast to northwest through the property. That would leave about 1,000 feet of road to cross the pink parcel above it, which is owned by Flowserve USA. It's an industrial pump manufacturer in the city. And we're in talks with Flowserve to obtain an easement across the property currently. So this future road is another one of our major infrastructure items, and we have, this is a project that for many, many years was anticipated by the city to be a state highway project. During the Glenn Denning administration and the state's move towards the smart growth approach, many bypass projects were terminated, including ours. So the state had acquired a number of parcels around the city for the future realignment of Route 140. And then basically, the city has grown for 30 to 40 years in anticipation of that road coming to fruition. And then, of course, in the mid-late 90s, the bypasses became, you know, they, they led towards more sprawl developments, so they were viewed as, you know, negative by the state at that point, and they haven't come back. So we have been in talks with the State Highway Administration, and they have agreed that, yes, it makes sense for this alternate to 140 to ultimately become a state highway. However, there is no money that the state can put towards the project for design, construction, right-of-way acquisition, you know, but they have, and it's kind of sad that I view this as a positive, but after many years of really just being told, well, break it into smaller and smaller pieces, and maybe we can talk about a really small piece, at least they've acknowledged that, yes, they see benefit of the road, and they are willing to accept it when it's built. So if we can build it, ultimately, the state will accept it. Some strings come with that, though. We need to build it to state highway standards. We need to, including their stormwater management standards, all of their review standards, and that is cost prohibitive for a developer to stomach. So we're right now in conversations with the Mountain Brook Farm developer, with District 7 at State Highway, trying to work out a letter of agreement with State Highway, trying to figure out who pays for the upgrade between meeting city or county standards and state standards. But the reason I bring up this road is because this is an opportunity for some coordination with the county. And while at the staff level, you know, we certainly enjoy a wonderful rapport with, with planning and land management and all the agencies within there, and we do our best to coordinate with comprehensive planning and engineering when it comes to anything A good portion of the proposed alignment of the road lies within the county. Outside, our Planning Commission did reaffirm the overall goals and objectives of the plan, so we don't expect any major deviations. But when we get to land use and growth elements, I think we are likely to see that we're going to be water resource constrained when it comes to the large growth area that was envisioned back in the 90s and up through 2010. One of our challenges, however, is we have a lot of pressure, not just for development within the city, but for ag preservation outside of the city. And even on this map that is now 15 years old, you can see that the city is largely being hemmed in by agricultural preservation. So this update, I think, is very important for us because eventually, we are not going to be able to grow outward. And we need to be mindful that what development does occur over the next 10 years, say, is development that will be more sustainable than what we have seen over the last 30 years. So we need to be mindful of, is the revenue stream from income tax and property tax from a particular development going to end up being at least revenue-neutral for the city instead of revenue-negative? So when we hear from developers, they may project out, well, you're going to get this much revenue for the next 25 years or 30 years even, and here's what you can expect for your maintenance bill for the project. Well, with today's materials and talking with our Public Works Director, we're looking at a longer lifespan for materials that goes beyond that pro forma developer may provide. So we need to be thinking, what's going to happen 50 years from now when the PVC pipe underground fails or the HDPE pipe fails? What's it going to cost us then to, to replace that? So we haven't brought in a consultant to do a long-range study like that. I don't know that there's much appetite to pay for such a study politically, so we're a little challenged there. So we have me kind of scrambling, trying to put, piece together the story. And with some of our recent infrastructure projects, we now know what it costs to replace storm drains, water, sewer, and rebuild a road, where we recently did that with Roberts Mill Road in the city. You know, we've done some initial analysis of how many years of property tax and highway user revenue and so on, you know, and surplus from the water and sewer fund. How many years does it take to accumulate enough money to pay for a project like this? And we're still kind of working through, making sure we're, you know, looking at money coming from the right buckets and so on, but it's, it's not a pretty picture. It takes a lot of years of tax revenue, a lot of years of, and water and sewer rates are always challenging. You know, we, with it being an enterprise system, obviously, the system, the user rates need to pay for the operation and maintenance of the system. We often do these rehabilitation projects as capital projects, and in the past, we've borrowed money for some of them. More recently, we've been able to save money to be able to pay for it out of pocket, but it takes years of savings to be able to do a single project like this. So each year, when we do our, when we have our, our annual audit, we take a look at, okay, here's what our, you know, and we have in recent years had a small surplus in our water and sewer revenues over our day-to-day expenses. That surplus needs to be reinvested into larger projects for the upkeep of the system. And that's something that's very difficult for us to explain to the ratepayers that, you know, when, when people see with our audit, oh, you made a profit last year, you should cut your rates. It's, it's hard to get the users to understand that, that surplus really goes to a pot that's going to do the next Roberts Mill Road project. And, you know, how many years of that surplus is it going to take to save up enough to do these projects? So a lot of big-picture items for us. And let's see. We are also revamping our, our Main Street program currently. We've surveyed some of our, we've surveyed our Main Street businesses, and our comprehensive plan survey that was recently completed touched on some aspects related to our Main Street. We found that historic preservation ranks higher than we would have expected, but we're also faced with the idea of private property rights and, you know, not telling people what they can and can't do with their property, which I'm sure is a challenge for all of us. We do have some design standards in place for our National Register Historic District, but they are very, very high-level. They don't speak to routine maintenance. They really only apply if you change the footprint of a building or the height of a building or, or build a new structure. So they don't, they don't go to the length of, say, having an actual historic preservation commission that reviews everything. I, I use the phrase "drive-by preservation," that when you drive through the old part of the city, you shouldn't see anything that's glaringly out of place. But otherwise, people can cover up their shingles with vinyl siding, they can replace their windows, you know, they can do all those typical maintenance things that do degrade community character a little bit, but at least we got something passed. They got watered down a good bit from what the committee working on them had initially developed, but that's what it took to get something in place, so, let's see. Last thing that I wanted to touch on, I talked about ag preservation kind of surrounding the city, and we have had talks with the county and, and, you know, we intend to partner with ag preservation in terms of water recharge, kind of circling back to that as well. When the county does an ag preservation easement, there's often a recharge component associated with that. So we have offered to participate in the cost of preservation easements with the recharge that would be part of that easement coming directly to the city or being conveyed to the city so that we have that going forward. So rather than us competing with ag preservation, which is really what we do as far as recharge goes right now, when I talk to a landowner, they expect us to be competitive for the price of an ag recharge or a water recharge easement with what they would get to go into ag preservation. And if we partner, we can hopefully, you know, get properties preserved for farm, for ag use, get the recharge for the city for smart growth densities, and not end up trying to outbid each other for, for, for a property. So again, we, we enjoy a very, I think, positive relationship with the county, you know, particularly at the staff level. You know, we have adopted a number of county ordinances that the county administers for us, and as currently the last holdout on stormwater management, Director Hine just made a presentation to our, our mayor and council this month on the idea of the city adopting the county's stormwater ordinance, and that went very well with the consensus of the council to move forward and exploring that further. So we will be introducing legislation to adopt that hopefully in the next month or two. So we will no longer be the, the holdout municipality that does their own stormwater regs. So and again, that's better aligns with our Water Resource Coordination Council and the various other water resource efforts that we do coordinate with the county on. With that, I think I've given a pretty good overview of where we are in the city, and gentlemen, if you want to add anything or be happy to field questions.
City Manager, appreciate that. Well done. Just want to thank the Planning Commission for having Tawnytown and Sykesville and the other municipalities coming for you and share our story. I'm very excited about the comp plan update that we're doing, and we decided to go another route and spend lots of money because time-wise on the daily fly, we can't do this. We tried it a couple of times and got to chapter three and started back over, and so we're doing it the other way. But just want to say thank you. It's a pleasure to be in front of you, and we appreciate county staff for being so easy to work with and so helpful for some of us newer people to the process. And again, thank you.
I'd like to thank you also for allowing us to be, before you're here today, and thank you again.
Thank you all. Can, can you identify on there where the, excuse me, proposed bypass goes?
Daphne, if you could move the slide.
I think I know, but.
Is it right here? Yes, that's, that is the primary alignment, 1A. There were a number of potential alignments from a corridor study that our consultant engineer developed, gosh, I think around 2004? So it's, it's a little bit dated at this point, and we have seen that in terms of the Mountain Brook Farm project, there's apparently only one spot with the intersection with Maryland Route 194 that provides the adequate sightline distance. So that alignment actually, Daphne, if you could move the cursor over to Kraus Mill Road and the, it's on the pink property a little bit down.
This way?
Too far. Let's see. The next point, right there.
Here.
Okay, where, where Daphne's cursor is, that is a realignment of Kraus Mill Road that's known as Shower Road in the comprehensive plan. The Mountain Brook Farms road alignment basically intersects Route 194 right about that point. So if we can work towards that shower, that realignment of Kraus Mill Road, which of course is a county road, that lines up with the Mountain Brook Farm alignment, and possibly a segment of Kraus Mill Road could function as part of that bypass alignment going forward. And, and this is on the property that Evapco acquired a couple of years ago. So that's, that's another area that, you know, again, just trying to keep that corridor open and preserved for future road segments, you know, even if we get them, you know, one property at a time, even if we just get, you know, a right-of-way or a road easement, whatever we can do to keep that corridor open and, you know, facilitate construction, you know, property by property as we go along. As I said before, we're, we're in the midst of those conversations with State Highway, and, you know, we're, we're kind of faced with not letting perfect be the enemy of good in terms of, you know, right now, our conversation is, can the city contribute to the cost of the road to build it to SHA standards because it's going to be very challenging to, you know, developers are going to, you know, they are already making it quite clear that they meet all the traffic study obligations without building to state highway specs. specs. So we don't want to lose the opportunity of this road that has no driveways on it, um, that really would function as a leg of the bypass to be built because it can't be built perfectly. So we're in the midst of those discussions right now, and I don't know what the political appetite is going to be, um, for city contribution because obviously, like there are, like elsewhere in the county, I'm sure, um, a lot of folks that have moved into the subdivisions of the last 20 years, uh, don't want to see any more new houses built. Just like one, one interesting tidbit from our survey is a lot of folks moved to Tonnytown because it was affordable, but they also don't want us to pursue affordable housing. So it's been very interesting. So, and I'm sure it's not something that's, uh, alien to you all.
No, it's not. Matt, you had a question?
Yeah, um, one of them comes around the road alignment because it, it looks like your road alignment that you had on originally wasn't, because all the different lines coming across there, you know, you have the dotted line with the green hash and then you have the solid black line with the pink. Is the pink one, the one that was out there before that far out or no? What, what is the green line and the black line to the left of the property there?
So those, those were alternates that our engineer came up with. And they looked at, uh, they looked at property use, environmental constraints. I don't think they got to the point of, um, real estate pricing. They, they used what I believe is referred to as the McHarg method where, from a planner that developed it many years ago, where, where they started applying like layer, you know, layer by layer to, to, um, come up with a corridor. And, uh...
Because I know like some of our challenges, like in Eldersburg, you know, some, some of the places where we had designated roads ended up getting built, roads got changed, and now you can't interconnect stuff. And that's like, if the bypass is ever going to be done, it definitely needs to be coordinated with the county and the state to...
Yes.
Make sure it goes around. Then the other thing, you, you said your, your current water is 37,000, it must be 370,000. You said that upfront, I would imagine.
Actually, it's, it's, uh, 37,000 gallons per day is what, we, we carry a monthly water allocation resolution. And that is the amount of gallons that are not, um, let's see, that's the difference basically between our permitted capacity or our pumping, uh, daily pumping and, um, what's not, not consumed by or not measured on our water billing. So that's the difference between what we use and what we're permitted. So we're getting very close to...
Okay, so you're getting really close, yeah.
Yes, we're getting very close to not having water available.
You're 100, 100 some ounces away, I would imagine.
Yes.
Because I think it's what, 290?
Right, 250 gallons per day per dwelling. Uh, we do, we typically do, uh, half of that for either a retirement dwelling or a town home. Uh, and the state has been accepting those numbers, um, when we have projects coming through. We were under a consent agreement in the early 2000s. We had to reconcile, uh, with the health department, our existing buildable lots in the city, uh, so similar to the buildable land inventory that we use for, for planning purposes. Uh, but we were under the microscope with the health department as MDE's local, uh, gatekeeper, so to speak, and they were scrutinizing every building permit that used water, uh, for quite some time. So we had to work with the health department for every new home that was coming online, um, to make sure that we didn't go over that threshold. And that's when we started to, um, do this monthly water allocation resolution. Uh, so we, we have a, uh, a subdivision in the, in the works right now, also at the preliminary plan stage that will, uh, that looks pretty, pretty much like a sure thing that is going to get through, and it's for 50, uh, age-restricted dwellings, um, on the western edge of the city. Uh, so that's going to dip into that 37,000 gallons per day. So, you know, that will, when they reach preliminary plan approval is when we attribute, we, we say that money is reserved. It's not technically allocated, but we start putting an order resolution as, okay, this is in the pipeline, you know, and they're going to be likely the next to actually be allocated. So that 37,000 gallons is going to go down by, um, you know, several thousand in the, hopefully in the next, you know, four or five months if we can get that project to preliminary approval. So we are, we are very tight on the water side right now.
Okay. Well, yes, thank you. It sounds like you have some challenges ahead, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, moving forward, number nine. Oops, hang on. Let me just go back for a second. Is there any public comment on the Sykesville or Tonnytown presentation? Okay.
I'd, I'd like to, one comment on the, the subcommittee that we're forming on the housing. I think it would be interesting to know, and that sounds clinical or, you know, um, you know, academic, but I'd like to understand what we think as a county, and maybe the cities have a grip on it too. What, what do we think, um, certain houses or assisted living? What, what do we think these different houses that we have, these different categories of residential that we have? What do we think they cost, um, the municipalities or the county in terms of services provided, water and sewer, uh, road, transportation, you know, emergency, whatever? And then what do we think from a revenue standpoint? We, those, those same homes generate for the county? I'd like to understand, um, because, you know, we all think, you know, commercial would, would solve things, and I think that's, that's true. We need more commercial. But I'd also like to understand, you know, which of those are more desirable than not? Does that make sense?
I understand your question, and I know that we have explored that in the past.
I don't know how you, how you figure it out, but there's got to be a...
Yeah, I think there are challenges to figuring that out, but I will definitely do some investigating and see what, um, what kind of reasonable, um...
What assumptions can you make? I mean, could, you know, how many kids are going to school? I mean, we're having to pay for that. I mean, but again, I, I'd just like to understand where we think we're headed, um, when we, because right now, in certain areas, it seems like we're building a lot of over 55. Is that generating the revenue we think it needs to generate, given the services we need to provide to those over 55 communities? I'd like to understand.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll see what I can come up with.
Question I have is when you come back to the ag land preservation, I know the county owns a lot of, you know, of course Ralph's not here, he did a lot of them. But, um, back in the day, 15, 20 years ago, they did a lot of the water recharge area on the ag preservation, uh, pieces. But then I was told that MDE wasn't accepting those unless they were right against the town or, because I know I had, I personally had a farm that was right beside the New Windsor watershed, that the county got the water recharge or half the water recharge off of. How is that accounted in the figures for the towns? Because, does anybody know that question in here? No, not really.
I don't know. Chris, do you have any, um, better specifics on the water recharge credits and that sort of thing?
Good morning.
So I'm going to go by memory here. And we can certainly, um, put together something that we can bring to the next, next meeting to just clarify, make sure I've got everything correct. But essentially, those water recharge credits that the county, um, the county takes as part of the ag preservation program policy is, is that those are used for very specific purposes in the municipalities or in, um, in areas that are not incorporated. So for example, if there's a rural village that there's some sort of issue that, that develops from a water supply perspective, if there are ag preservation easements in that area that have recharge capability, it allows then to use those recharge credits to assist that rural village if some sort of, of public works, um, solution needs to be implemented. So that's one of the reasons why, why we retain those. And then as far as the municipalities, typically that recharge is used for, um, infill, um, commercial development, commercial slash industrial development, um, and smart growth-type policies. But I'll get those documented specifically for you and, and bring those to the next meeting. But the, the idea is that they're used for very specific purposes, not just generally addressing deficits.
Yeah. Because I know they, they bought quite a few of them at one time, but I also know that the mouth easements, being it's a state-held easement, you can't go back and get the water recharge rates on those.
Right.
Um, because I remember there was a thing in Union Bridge, they were talking about that at a farm, uh, 10, uh, 20 years ago. But, uh, I also know that we put one in the county that we did not give up the water recharge area just because we thought future use it may impede something. So, yeah, it'd be good to know how they look at that because, you know, New Windsor's water recharge areas outside of town where most of their wells are. And I know there were several properties around there that have recharge areas held, so. Didn't know if that was something that Tonnytown could dip into in Tonnytown, but they all look like mouth easements, so.
So, yes, there are some county easements, and we have been talking with the town or with the city as far as, uh, utilizing some of those to, to help, um, address their deficit. Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, thanks, Chris. Number nine. Mr. Zaleski, I believe this is you, fiscal year '26 preliminary recommended CI PIP.
It's 10 on the new one.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We added 10.
I'm sorry, it's not you.
It is you.
Oh, it is you?
It's just number 10, not number nine.
It's number 10. Okay. I get that.
Just add one to...
You're up.
Well, there's really nothing for, for me to do. We're just hoping that you have the, the, the letter confirming that you're okay with the master plan.
So if I could just jump in, we have, um, shared with you a draft letter for your consideration. We had two roadway projects, um, pointed up in that letter, um, that specifically were called out because they relate to recent development projects, um, that have been designed to accommodate these roadway projects. So those are, um, projects that you all have seen, and they relate to Arrington Boulevard and Protheroe. So those are the ones that we put in the letter for your consideration. And, um, if you have any suggested changes to that letter, want to, um, go ahead and approve it as is, um, then we can share that with Ted once it's final.
You have, you written it?
No, I'm fine with the letters.
Okay.
Nothing to add?
Okay.
So do you, we need a motion to approve the letter?
Yes, please.
I'll move that we approve the letter as submitted, uh, dated February 18th, 2025.
Second.
Okay. First and a second, all in favor.
Can we do this as an approval call?
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mr. Kane? Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Swenson?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Abstain.
And, uh, Ms. Kuckner?
Yes.
The, uh, the record reflect, we have five yeas and one abstain.
I shall sign.
Thank you.
Any public comment on that? Okay. We do have a five, 10-minute break. Which, five, 10?
Five is fine with me.
Five is good.
Five, okay, good. All right. Take a five-minute break. Take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back in session. And before we go any further, I just want to remind everybody that we do have some rules that we adhere to. So speakers must sign in to make public comment. Speakers must state their name, address, and talk into the microphone to facilitate audio and video recording. Comments will be strictly limited to three minutes per speaker. Citizen testimony is not a question-and-answer session. If you have questions, they can be directed to the staff after the meeting. If an individual fails to comply with these rules, the Planning and Commission Chair may call the person out of order and may require him or her to leave the meeting. So with that, we will move forward to item number 11, the concept subdivision plan, S-230014 Dixon Lane Solar.
Good morning. My name is Amy Barcroft from the Department of Development Review. This is a concept site plan. Just a correction there. The file number is S-230014 Dixon Lane Solar. So this is a concept site plan for your consideration, but we are also seeking a determination regarding a request for a modification to the setbacks. Just like any concept site plan for review, the Planning Commission may consider delegating final approval of this plan to the Planning Commission Chair. This subject property is located in Commissioner District 5. We are east of Washington Road, Maryland Route 97, and north of Liberty Road. The subject property is a 38 and 1/2-acre parcel near the intersection of Clees Mill Road specifically and Dixon Lane. Dixon Lane is a privately-owned road, and Clees Mill is a county-owned road. This property contains large farm fields surrounded by a line of woods around the perimeter of the parcel. Currently, there is no access existing to this property, but there is frontage along Dixon Lane. The property and surrounding properties are served by well and septic, but future public water and public sewer service is planned as a priority. This property is inside both the priority funding area and the designated growth area of the Freedom District. The property is zoned to employment campus as well as properties to the west and the south, and all three of those properties are owned by the county. Properties to the north are zoned conservation, and properties along the eastern border are zoned agriculture and either undeveloped or have single-family homes. The developer is working with the county to propose the installation of ground-mounted photovoltaic solar facility over eight acres of the property. Let me skip towards that plan page, and then we'll review some of the earlier photos a little later. So ground-mounted solar is proposed over 8.44 acres of the property. And in accordance with the code at the time that the initial plan was submitted, Chapter 158, Section 153 of the Carroll County Code of Public Laws and Ordinances, solar energy conversion facilities were a permitted use in the Employment Campus zoning district at that time. So the purpose of this project is for the county to use generated energy from this site to go into the net aggregate total of this and three other facilities that the county has already developed to lower energy costs for county-owned buildings. So some previous projects that you may have already seen that are also a part of these group of solar, ground-mounted solar facilities, include the ones at the Carroll Community College. There are some at Hoodsmill and some in Hampstead Water Waste Treatment Area. There's a solar facility there, and these are all county solar projects. So this is a like project. It is not open to the community to benefit from, but again, strictly for the benefit of the county's energy savings. So access for this solar array is proposed from Clees Mill Road. And here we show the access road. It is proposed to cross the adjoining county-owned property. A paved driveway apron does exist, and an 18-foot access road is proposed. That road will lead to a gated entry of the solar facility, which will be surrounded by a seven-foot-tall ag fence. The fence parallels the perimeter of the property with 20-foot-wide landscape buffer proposed along the east and south sides of the array on the exterior of the fence. While landscaping is not required under the section of code, it is proposed in conjunction with a request from the developer for the modification of the setbacks. The code states that all setbacks are to be 200 feet, but if supplemental landscaping is provided, the Planning and Zoning Commission may reduce the required setback by 50%, down to 100 feet. So the developer is requesting 100-foot setbacks along the eastern and northern property lines. Here we have some images of what exists for the existing conditions today. This is the entrance that exists on Clees Mill Road, and that gravel eventually kind of dissipates into the farm fields that you can see the tan shade. These are crops that are being farmed by a tenant farmer up until relatively recent time period. So stormwater management will be addressed by non-rooftop disconnects. Concept stormwater management approval was granted for this project. Forest conservation is being addressed with a forest conservation easement on site. Landscape has been approved, as shown on the plan. Fire protection, engineering utilities, the Health Department, and grading have all approved the plan, and it was found to be consistent with the Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan by the Bureau of Planning. The final site will be tested and reviewed for adequacy of public facilities in accordance with Chapter 155. With me today is a representative from the developer, Standard Solar, and the engineer. If you all want to introduce yourselves, and we'll be happy to answer any questions about this plan or give any feedback that you might have.
Sure. My name is Ted Hastings. I'm a senior associate with Becker Morgan Group, right out of Salisbury, Maryland.
Alan Watson, Director of Construction, Standard Solar.
Just to touch base on a few other things. There's a, the 3,000-foot access road is a cellular confinement road. It's considered an alternative surface. So we're not adding more impervious site, impervious area to this site by the access road. Pretty neat how they work. It just doesn't allow the gravel to get compacted, so the water is able to infiltrate naturally. Again, this is Employment Campus District, which this was allowed use when we submitted this. We understand you have new solar ordinance, which also you could actually reduce the setbacks to 100 feet in that ordinance as well. One of the reasons why we decided to ask for the setback, we wanted to push the ray up into the northern, northeastern portion of this ray, kind of like a cluster, to keep it away from the few residential houses that are to the south. It's a very narrow lot to begin with. So naturally, we need the setback reduction in order to make this project viable as well.
Do you have any questions for us this morning or any thoughts on the requested reduction of the setbacks?
Can you put up the pictures of the site? Yeah.
So this is the access road entrance. This is the overall existing conditions.
The access road would be the one above the buildings there that comes into the grassy area and then just take it across.
Correct, to the north of the Legacy School.
Instead of coming through Dixon Road and coming.
Correct.
So, and then?
Is this helpful? Or would you like a different image?
Yeah. Now, we're, go back to the, that point. So the access road's coming up there and then cutting straight across back up to that, to there.
Correct.
I mean, it does help keep the construction traffic from driving past these houses.
That's correct. Dixon Lane wasn't adequate by any means for any construction equipment. It would have to be completely improved and did not make sense to go that direction.
Okay, so, well.
And the county still owns the other property also.
Correct.
Will they be blacktopping that road going in off of Clees Mill?
It's a cellular confinement road with a, I think, proposed.
It's a cellular confinement, gravel access road. And what it is, kind of looks like a honeycomb that you stick in the road, and you fill it up with stone. And it does not, doesn't allow the stone to compact. And by also doing that, it allows for a greater weight to be put on those roads, so you can put fire equipment on them all day long. They'll be able to handle it.
So that's what will be across Clees Mill.
That's correct.
And it does meet the width requirements for the concerns that commissioners and other bodies have had for the fire equipment to pass along the access road of 18 feet wide.
So full disclosure. We own the assisted living building that it joins there. So just in the past, like when there was construction, there was mounds of dust. So just want to make sure that's not a repeat.
Right. Part of the original sediment control was dust control. So if it becomes an issue, they'll have to sprinkle the ground just to keep the dust down.
Or else you'll have to complain every day.
Okay. Any other questions? So I guess the 100 feet.
Setback reduction.
Right.
And you said the 100-foot is to the north and to the east?
Right. To the north, where there's a conservation zone, so that those trees aren't going anywhere. And to the east, you see that little sliver of field there that's actively farmed. And then there's another stand of trees there as well. So it's very well shielded from the view shed, any view shed.
Thoughts?
No questions.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion to?
Do you want to ask for a public comment?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to ask for a public comment?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yes. So I would like to open it up for a public comment, if there is any for this. Okay. I don't see any, so. Now, we would need a motion.
And you would like this motion to include the fact that the chair could approve this? A move that we approve the site plan as submitted, and unless there are significant changes to that site plan, that the chair be permitted to sign and approve this without coming back to us.
All in favor?
Can we do this as a, sorry, roll call?
Yeah, sorry. I keep forgetting that.
That's why I'm here.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mr. Kane? Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Swyson?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Abstain.
Madam Chair, with the record reflect, we have five yeas and one abstain.
Thank you. Okay, that's approved. I do, I have a question, not necessarily for you, but the stone that's going up there, ultimately, isn't that the entrance to what could be the employment campus there? So wouldn't that be blacktopped in the future?
I can answer that one. We actually designed a commercial entrance for the site. So it is going to be paved and curbed with a new cover going underneath that entrance as part of this project.
The apron?
The apron, yes. Going into the site. So that's correct, just the apron. So what you're going to have is you're going to have a commercial entrance right at Clees Mills. Then once you get in 50 feet, that pavement's going to stop. Then it's going to take off and become the cellular confinement access road, which can later be improved to asphalt if you want later down the road.
Clarification. Okay. All right. Thank you. Number 12. Oh. Good morning.
We've got, we've got more to answer questions.
I'll leave a spot open. All right, hopefully.
Site plan.
Yes, we have a site plan. We have quite a site plan. This isn't even the full folder. My arms are not long enough to carry it all. Okay. Good morning. This is Kirsten with the Bureau of Development Review. We are before you today with the final site plan for Sheets. If I could have you gentlemen introduce yourselves while I get this pulled up.
Sure. I'm John McGuire, Attorney for Sheets. And to my right is Gary Killefeather, who is the Project Manager for Sheets.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Good morning. So this is a final site plan for the Sheets project on the northwestern side of the city of Westminster. It might look familiar to many of you. This is actually the third time the Planning Commission has seen it. And again, we are here seeking final approval for this site plan. We are located on the northwest side of the city of Westminster. This is actually outside of the city Westminster limits on the north side of 140 to the east of the Route 97 North ramp, located on the west side of Sullivan Road. So this is in this county limits as a business zoned property, a C2, I believe. Get my notes with me. Yep, C2. And the property is being developed under county regulations, reviewed under county regulations, approved under county regulations, and then it has an agreement to be annexed into the city of Westminster once they begin construction. This is an agreement that's been in place since basically the very beginning of this project. So they're looking to seek approval from our Planning Commission, and then we will wrap up the process with bonding and all that fun nitty gritty stuff, and then hand it over to the city. Or rather, the city will be the municipal jurisdiction that it will be within. Okay, so this is a close-up of the site. You might be familiar with it if you've driven past on 140 going towards 97. It's on the right-hand side as you're driving northbound there. And right now, it's a collection of basically three different uses. The uses there were all developed on three different parcels over the years, mostly in the 70s and the 80s, and for the most part have discontinued use at this point, and it's been that way for a little while. There was a gas station area at the corner with a couple of entrances onto Sullivan and onto 140. There is just north of that, a auto repair facility, which recently was for ambulance sales and repair. And then behind that was a Vochelli's Pizza Shop. To the west of that, too, you can see an access to the Westminster Community Duck Pond. And then, as we saw in the last picture here, just to the west of that, is the access ramp to Maryland 97 North. So here's the site plan. This essentially is more or less unchanged from what's been submitted from the very beginning of this review process, started in 2021 when we first received it. We presented it in a technical review committee meeting in 2021, and then to the Planning Commission in 2023 as a special report reviewing the layout of the site, in particular, the access points and traffic situation in this area. Again, it was presented thereafter, December 19th of 2023, for a concept review. And at that time, the Planning Commission did want to see it again as a full commission. So we are here for a final approval review here. Plans basically hasn't changed from the very beginning. This has shifted a little bit from our last views. Here's that access path to the duck pond. Here's Sullivan Road over here on the right-hand side and 140 across the bottom. And this corner here, you can see the about 5,000-square-foot convenience store proposed for Sheets. To the right of that, five fueling stations with a canopy, an access point off of Sullivan Road all the way up to the north as much as it could be. And then in and out off of 140, both full movement access points here off to the west as far as it could be. This is all principal permitted use and the county zoning district here. You can see here behind the building, a retaining wall. The retaining wall of note is relatively close to the rear property line here, which is shared of the residential property. Retaining walls typically need a certain amount of screening at the bottom of them. This one has a slight reduction in the amount of screening, I believe, from 15 feet down to 10 feet, with agreement from that neighbor that it is adjoining to allow for that five-foot reduction in landscaping. I'm going to go to the next page, which shows that. So you can see there's still landscaping in that area. All these bubbles are landscaping. Some of them are tiny and kind of hard to see, but they run all the way along the frontage and then along this back here with trees. And then this area between the access point to the duck pond, the building and the dumpster site is pretty heavily landscaped as well. The building will have building-mounted lights. The canopy will have lights for the canopy. It's a gas station. There will be lights on at nighttime. It is a 24-hour operation. They did provide a photometric plan, which I don't have in here, but I believe it's unchanged from the last time that it was presented at concept. 20-foot pole lights around the parking lot area and then lighting for the canopy in the building. Here are some views of what you would currently see there. As of last week, I believe there's still some snow on the ground in these pictures here. So here's the gas station site. They've removed the canopy since then. Here's the auto site, and then the Vochellis here. And here's the access on Sullivan Road. This area here is essentially, they're going to have a little bit of sidewalk right where the sign is. And then this is essentially where the entrance on Sullivan Road is. Here's looking right towards 140. So this area here will be widened as part of this plan review. This project did require a traffic impact study. The study period was performed in 2021 through 2022 and reviewed. They're proposing, I think we can see it best here. So they're proposing a, oh, you know what? I actually have. I thought I had one that specifically showed that. I guess I did not include that. My apologies. We'll make do. Okay, so Sullivan Road, they're proposing some widening here. I think you can see a faint green color here that's greener than the pale green in this area. That's a widening of the road, so they're giving up a little bit of their frontage. They're giving up a little bit of their property to widen Sullivan Road there to allow for a dedicated right turn to 140, a left straight on 140, and then a dedicated left turn. And then over here, if you're going, I believe that's north-northeast on Sullivan, they are accommodating for a bypass lane around traffic turning left into the Sheets site. And those were the mitigations proposed through the traffic impact study. And doing that, they'll be shifting some stuff in the state highway area as well. This little island, which you can see in one of the photographs, will be shifting a little bit. And they'll be doing some work with the traffic light and signaling there to accommodate the different traffic patterns that will be resultant from this. The traffic impact study and the traffic patterns was largely the discussion of our Planning Commission meeting. The first one before the concept, the county had concerns about the traffic impact study and mitigations proposed. However, the State Highway Administration has approved the traffic impact study, and the Planning Commission, we discussed it and brought it to attention, but we're here before you for final now to make sure everything still looks good. Here's that island. I was mentioning, they'll be shifting a little bit. And this area here will shift in a little bit to accommodate the different turning patterns. I believe this infrastructure here is to remain. So it's not too much, but it's wide enough to accommodate the different turning patterns. And this is the Sheets building. I think it's pretty similar to the Sheets building on 140 that was built in the past five years or so. Corner element here will be closest to the intersection itself is where the main entrance is going to be. This is facing 140. They'll have some areas for seating, I think a bike rack here as well. This is facing Sullivan Road with, again, more areas for seating. And then these are the rear facades that will face the access path to the community pond and then which will face the rear where the retaining wall is. And this meets all of our zoning regulations for height requirements. So being so close to the community pond, stormwater management's being handled largely with the assistance of that. They'll be using trench drains on site as well. It is a gas station, so they're handling that stormwater appropriately. Exempt from floodplain, forest conservation, they're performing off-site banking. There's really not much wiggle room on here for forest conservation, so that will all be off-site. The city of Westminster is, again, will be annexing this. They will be providing water and sewer service for the site. There is a new hydrant proposed, I believe, right here, a new fire hydrant as well, which will be using the city water there. In this area as well, you can see sidewalk running along Sullivan Road and along 140, which then connects to the Sheets through crosswalks and accessible paths and continues to the west towards the community pond access point for future connection. So I think that's about all I've got for this one, and I'm happy to answer any questions I may be able to answer. And of course, these gentlemen here can probably fill in the blanks that I can't respond to.
Matt? Ralph?
We've seen it a couple of times, so.
Right. We have no questions. Would you, gentlemen, like to say anything before I open if a public comment?
Only that we would agree with Kirsten's presentation. It is essentially the same as what you've seen in the past. And we have, not only Gary, but others here, if there are questions that need to be answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, Janice, I'll just say and acknowledge verbally that we have all received emails from people living in this area, including on Han Road and Sullivan Road. And so, yeah, we did get those emails and I did read them, so I appreciate their comments.
Okay. All right. Any public comment? Okay. Please step to the microphone, give your name, address, and speak clearly.
Hi, I'm Scott Fisher. I've lived on Han Road above this proposed inconvenience store since 1966.
I'm sorry, can you give us your address?
19 Han Road.
Okay.
I can throw a baseball and with one bounce would be in the parking lot of that store. Now, I've witnessed over the years 50% of the houses built in that neighborhood. I also witnessed Geno's be built, which was only the second one in Maryland at the time, right below my house. But I've also witnessed nothing but backups. Sit at the bottom of Han Road to try to get out on Sullivan Road to 140 is just a nightmare. And this would only inconvenience everybody totally, totally much more. If there's only one entrance and exit that she pointed out, that doesn't solve anything, and she's talking about a right turn lane that's already there. But you got to get to it. That's the problem. And there's so many people now that use Sullivan Road for short stops to get over by the airport. I mean, it is just a congested area, and this would totally, just totally blow my mind and just reduce resale values of our homes. It's not needed. There's also five gas stations within a mile of there. There's also a gas station within 150 yards of there. So I mean, what is, what do we need another inconvenience store for? Plus all the, you know, the undesirables that would be coming up the hill past my house again. We've already got that. I just don't understand why it's needed.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Dan Huff. I'm with the Westminster City Council. I am here to offer our support for this redevelopment project. I believe this is the third time this project has been in front of you. The reality is with any redevelopment project, nothing's ever going to be perfect. But right now, you have a hodgepodge mess of three different commercial buildings on this site. You're going to be going from three different commercial buildings to one commercial building. Having looked at the traffic studies, which I assume you all have as well, while this does not make this intersection perfect, it actually improves, from a data standpoint, some of the issues going on there. And the reality is with redevelopment, you can't make something perfect. And, but this makes it better. So I'm here with the city of Westminster, definitely in support of this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Oh, okay. Nope, well.
Okay, well, this, this building is not even in city limits. Why? I mean, I don't understand. Not even in city limits.
Okay. Did you want to speak? Yes, please come up to the microphone. State your name and address.
Sure. My name is Cheryl Dougal. My address is 9 Sullivan Road. And I'm just asking questions and confirm what is happening, if anything, to the corner there of Sullivan and Han? Because I'm the corner house right there. Are they, is that being touched with our property or is that being left alone?
This location here?
I'm sorry, where?
Sorry, that's, if you're driving, okay. I do not believe the limited disturbance expands to that area. I do not believe any work will be happening in your yard. There might be some activity on the road in that area as they remark the turn lanes. That's why they're taking land from their property and they're widening the road that way.
And not my property.
That's what the plans are showing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarification.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, seeing none.
I said, just for the clarification, at what time is this property going to go into the city of Westminster? Before it's built or after it's built?
Well, under the annexation agreement, which we provided a copy to the county, it's after construction, significant construction has begun. The city then has the ability to initiate the annexation process. So it's not crystal clear as exactly when that will happen, and that process itself takes probably 90 to 120 days. But it will happen, almost certain to happen during the initial phases of construction.
Just for clarification.
So with that thought, the bonding process, then, it would be through the county, is that right?
County, yes, between.
Once it's annexed, then who is responsible then for the bond? And is that transferred or who's responsible for that?
Right. The county will still be holding those bonds. The county will be completing the follow-up. These regulations are based on the county regulations, and we'll be following up to ensure that those are met through the construction process. So between approval, final approval by the Planning Commission, and annexation by the city and following annexation by the city, the county will be handling the processing of the legal documents and the bonding that follows that. The building permit will be approved by, reviewed and approved by the county, and then construction begins, and then the city begins the annexation process. Construction ends at some point, bonds are released from the county.
Okay, thank you.
So the, I guess, assumption is that the city will annex it before the water is given?
No, actually, the water is committed upfront. No, actually, the water is committed upfront.
Okay.
And just to add to what was just said, there will be a public works agreement with the city because there's city water and sewer. So any work that's done on the city system will be bonded under a public works agreement with the city upfront. And the city will not sign off on a building permit that will come from the county until that happens. So we are aware of that and we're working carefully with the city on that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Any further questions from public? Okay, gentlemen? Don't all speak at once.
I make a motion that we approve S-21-0004, the Sheets in Westminster.
And subject to the conditions noted in the staff report, which I won't make you read, there's eight of them. There's a lot of easements.
Yes, and that part too.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Sorry, roll call.
Sorry. I'll get it one of these days.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mr. Kane? Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Swyson?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Abstain.
Madam Chair, let the record reflect, we have five yays and one abstain.
Okay, thank you. All right, you stand approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. So moving on to 13 would be general public comment.
Oops, sorry, tried to catch it.
Is there?
I know you did. And we've been at it for a while. Let's just cut our losses here.
Yeah. Okay. Seeing the anxious people leaving.
I'll get that, I'll get that.
I'll call for a motion. Okay, all in favor?